I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I just have to make a mental note about the announcements, but welcome to our August 27th, 2024 Select Board Meeting. For announcements this evening, tomorrow evening, Grafton's Town Takeover at Polar Park is this Wednesday, tomorrow. Tickets purchased for the Woo Sox game will benefit the Friends of Grafton elders. And I did go online, there's two price points, and it kind of indicates there where some of our funds will be going. Grafton Recreation will hold their Collectibles Fair on Saturday, September 7th, 2024, from 10:00 a.m. till 3:00 p.m. here at the municipal center. There'll be coins, comics, toys, records, trading cards, and sports memorabilia. Entry is free. Pardon me. The Regional EV Expo will take place on Sunday, September 29th, from 2:00 till 5:00 at 50 Otis Street in Westboro. Volunteers from the area will be at this event with their electric vehicles to share their ownership experience and answer questions from visitors. Entry is free. And with the new school year starting this week, please remember that parking for students and parents is not permitted at the senior center or the municipal center. Vehicles found in violation may be towed. Okay, and we are going to, is Tom here?
Tom is with us on Zoom.
Okay, so if it's okay with everyone, we're going to just skip ahead to the first item under New Business because Tom's under a bit of a time crunch. So we just wanted to meet him this evening and have him say a few words. Welcome, Tom.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here. I appreciate it. Do you want me to just tell a little bit about myself? Is that what you?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Sure, great. So I am the, I will still say new director of the Grafton Public Library. And I started in June, beginning of June, and so I'm coming up on finishing my three months. And it's been quite a learning experience. And so I've been acquainting myself with the library and everything that goes along with that, getting to know the patrons, people of the community, the staff, the board of library trustees, as well as municipal employees. So there's a lot of new faces for me, only one for them, for everybody else. So you just need to get to know me. But I welcome everybody into the library. Stop by whenever you are in the area, because I would love to chat with people about libraries and librarianship, because it's something I feel very passionate about. And I believe that we have the possibility of doing some really great things here at the Grafton Public Library. So I would love to take the opportunity to chat with anybody about what libraries mean to them, hoping that everybody has a library card. September is actually going to be the National Library Card Sign-Up Month, so we'll be doing a strong push for that. And so it's a great time, if you don't have a card or if it's expired, to stop in. Renewal cards are free, by the way, in September. But otherwise, just stop in, because I'd love to chat with people about what libraries mean to them, because that's the only way that we grow. As a little bit of background, I moved here, moved to Upton, I'm actually living in Upton, in June with my spouse and I. And we came from Springfield, which is where I was working before this. So I was working at the Springfield City Library, which was almost as different a situation as you could possibly imagine than the Grafton Public Library. So Springfield being a city of 150,000 as opposed to roughly 20,000 makes for a very different experience. But that's what I was looking for. I was really looking for a chance to serve a community that I could get to know. So with 150,000, it's hard to get to know everybody. 20,000 is still hard to get to know everybody, but at least have a fighting chance. So I'm working on it. Springfield has also nine different locations as opposed to the one, which I really liked, had that centralized location, so that we have everybody gathering in one community, one community hub, really. So it was, Grafton certainly was the type of experience that I was looking for, type of community I was looking for, and certainly a beautiful area. So it's not hard to do the drive-in each day from Upton along 140, passing Silver Lake every morning and seeing the lotus in bloom. It's like, you know, this is, this is pretty good. So I didn't have much of that in Springfield, and so it's pretty nice to have here. So just looking to serve the community, get to know what people want. I mean, people are asking me, like, well, what great, you know, innovative ideas do you have? And my response is usually, I have no idea, because it would be presumptuous of me to assume that I would know what would serve the community. And it's really for me to take this time to orient and to respond and to do a little bit of healing for the library, because it's been a challenging year for them. And there have been, there have been a couple of surprises and certainly a number of challenges that awaited me here. But we're moving forward, and that's what we do. Librarians are nothing if not adaptable. And so, you know, how many years have people been telling us, you know, oh, the book's a dead format, why are you sticking with this? We find ways to adapt. And that's what we're doing in Grafton. So I'm happy to be able to lead the charge when I can, or empty the garbage when I can, or, you know, just meet and greet at the farmer's market. And I hope to meet everybody that's here. I know a few of you. I hope to meet everybody there in the library. You'll know how to find me, just look for the, there's a big window that has a lot of paper-cut-out fish on it. And stop by, and I'll tell you why there are a lot of fish, a lot of fish on my window.
Okay, that's great. Thank you so much, Tom. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments for Tom?
Let's just say that I got to meet Tom, I think, in the middle of June. I was, I was at the library with my family, and he was roaming around the library. We had a nice conversation. He introduced himself, talked about the library. And I would just say, I think that was great. Keep doing that. You know, it's a real community space. Meet the community, find out what they, what their needs are. I mean, you know how to sure run a library a lot better than I do. But I think that's an important component to, to library life, I'm sure. So, but you were, you were great in welcoming, and that's, that's what we want to see there.
Wonderful. Thank you. That's great. Yeah, I do remember meeting you. And that's, that was, that's really special to me. You know, to me, it's important to take the library where the people are. It's not, it's not just, oh, that's that building where the books are. It's, you know, if I'm at the farmer's market, the library's at the farmer's market. If I'm at Stop and Shop, then the library is at Stop and Shop.
That's great. Anyone else? Matt?
Yeah, thanks through you, Madam Chair. Yeah, Tom, great to have you on board. We've got a, obviously, a new library, and it's fantastic to have a, you know, you as the shepherd of the ship, as it were. It's really great to hear your perspective, that sort of the service that you provide is a service, and your orientation as a, as a library director as a service to the community. That's something that this board has continued to emphasize, that service orientation. And it seems like you're very compatible and aligned with, with that orientation. So thanks so much, and welcome.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Andy.
Thank you. It was, you know, kind of bum luck that we haven't had a chance to have you in yet and got bumped on the last one. But the benefit being, you've been on the job a few months now, and I just wanted to, again, share the welcome and note that we've had, you know, we've heard some, some great things and some great feedback, you know, about how outgoing and passionate you are about the topics. I had a couple of the questions about things that he enjoyed, but you went through them so eloquently at the beginning. I think you answered just about everything. So it's, it's nice to hear the appreciation for the town and, you know, the potential and the library and what it has to offer.
Yes. Great.
Mr. Alma?
Agreed. Welcome to the, welcome to the work. Great to have you here. Thanks for joining us.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you for inviting me.
Yeah, go ahead, Evan.
Thank you. I just wanted to note, so William and I have been working with Tom since July, right? When Tom started?
June.
June. Okay, right around there. But we found Tom to be just an excellent partner. We work very well together. Like to see everything that Tom has going up, going on up there. And, you know, we're very happy to have, to have Tom here.
Great. All set?
Yeah, that was it, sorry.
Welcome, Tom. Thrilled to have you here. Thanks for coming in to meet us this evening, and we appreciate all the work that you're doing up at the library. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Take care.
I'm gonna bow out, so have a great meeting, everybody.
No problem. Take care.
Appreciate it.
Okay, great. I've heard good things about Tom. So let's get back over, back up to appointments with, for, we have a number of election workers. We can just take a motion for that, Mark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move the board vote to appoint Charles Schwartz, Rorico Amano, Kathleen Riley, Linda Bent, Anne Alia, June Whitney, Penasue Balandrea, I'm sorry, Bolandrina, and Mehdi Parali as election workers.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? And barring none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero. I'm just reminded that we were asked to just make sure that we're speaking into our mics loud and clear. I think that there's been a few issues over the week, so. Okay, and then we can move on to Accessibility Advisory Commission. I think likewise, we can just probably take a motion.
Happy to do that, Madam Chair. I move the board vote to appoint Tracy Sharkey as our representative on the Accessibility Advisory Commission.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. And I think we had discussed that Bob Berger had previously filled this role. It seemed appropriate that the building department would be involved in this particular commission. I think there's still an open seat at large, maybe, in this commission as well, just FYI. So with that being said, we have a motion seconded. Any further discussion? And barring none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero. And that brings us to the chief of police. We have here our chief. I'm gonna pass it over to Evan, sorry?
And I think Neil's gonna either come up to the podium or have a seat. Okay. Yeah, so just a quick recap of how we got here today. So back in 2022, Chief Crapo had approached me with the idea of creating a deputy chief position for the idea, again, of creating that continuity of operations and bringing forth internal candidates that could rise to the level of chief. It was then Lieutenant Minardi who moved up to the deputy chief position and is now going to step up into the role of chief, starting on October 4th at some point. We're gonna work out the logistics of handing over keys and guns and whatnot. I don't know what all that goes into it. But, but yeah, we're, we're looking forward to it. I met Neil back in 2021. I think we immediately created a mutually respectful relationship. We've worked together pretty closely over those, the last three-plus years. And yeah, I'm really, really proud and excited to be able to appoint Chief Minardi, so.
Thank you. Thank you. So again, currently deputy chief. I, I have a quick bio here. I think you've probably all seen my resume, so I don't want to ramble on. But I started here in 1996, and I, over the past couple of months, this has all kind of played out. A few people have asked me, why, you know, why would you want to be a police chief? Not that it was a bad thing, but, you know, why would you want to do that? And I found it to be kind of a strange question, because I really couldn't find an answer immediately that came off my tongue. So I thought back to some 30 years ago, when I was just a young man applying for entry-level law enforcement positions. And a common question back then was, and it probably still is now, you know, where do you see yourself in five years or 10 years, et cetera? And I certainly never thought I'd be a police chief, and certainly 30 years ago, that never occurred to me. But my honest answer to the question was, I just want to take full advantage of every opportunity I can to make myself a valuable asset to the organization and into the community that I serve. And that really has been my approach all along. So as years go by, you get asked to do things, and some things you want to do, some things you don't want to do. But my approach has been, if it's in the best interest of the organization, then it certainly warrants my best effort. And I think that that has served me over the years. I've worked for four different police chiefs, certainly for Chief Crapo. I've been in his command for 20 years now. So it's provided with opportunities, and I think that's a big part of what got me here. I can also, I can recognize and realize that a bigger part of what got me here is the support that I've had from a lot of people along the way. So again, I recognize Chief Crapo in 20 years, his guidance and his support. Certainly Evan, in the past few years, his guidance and support through this process. Certainly members of the board, I thank you folks, past members of the board, some are here. Over the years, I've had a lot of opportunities that were supported by members of the board, so that's been a big part for me. And I can also say, you know, the men and women of our organization, of the Grafton Police Department, that certainly past members, because I've worked with a lot of them that are not here anymore, but in our current members, that without them, without the work that they do, in the support that they give, this wouldn't be possible. I wouldn't be here. So I'm super appreciative to them. So I guess a little more, some background about me personally. My, my wife and I, we, we lived on North Main Street in North Grafton for about 14 years. Well, I did. She kind of came along later. But back in, I think it was 2018, we built ourselves a new family home in Oxford. My family was growing, and I think if, probably most of you will recall, a bulk storage propane facility that was built off North Main Street. Well, I'm not much of a golfer, but I could chip a ball and hit one of those tanks from my house. So I decided not to raise my family there and stay there. Great neighborhood, but we, we moved on to Oxford, built a beautiful home there. So I have a beautiful wife. She's an RN. We're raising three kids. My, my oldest, my son, Jaden, is gonna be 16 in October, so a sophomore this year. My middle daughter is a freshman in Oxford, and my little one's eight years old and just started third grade. So it keeps us pretty busy. And what little, what little spare time we have left, I enjoy physical activities and outdoors and things of that nature. So I guess that, in summary, I guess the theme of what I'm saying is I'm super thankful for the opportunities, and I'm humbled by this opportunity as well. And I look forward to my continued leadership and service to this town, and to be in the next chief of police in the town of Grafton. It's pretty exciting.
Great. Wow. Anyone from the board have any questions or comments? I know that they do.
I'll go.
Andy?
Your, your service to this community is, is just longstanding. It's, it's, you know, bittersweet that, that Chief Crapo is retiring, but, you know, also really, you know, a nice and, and looking forward to the future, you know, with, with you at the helm as well. It feels like we were, we were just at your deputy penning not too long ago. But, you know, we, even going, thinking back to like Finance Committee and when you started attending budget hearings and stuff like that, and knowing that, you know, this was our plan for succession. So it's great to be able to promote from within. You have made yourself, you know, an invaluable member of this police force and achieved many of your, it sounds like, your goals already. So it's, it's great that you continue with those, and we're just happy to have you.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Matt?
Sure. Yeah, chief, my deputy chief, chief eventually. Yeah, congratulations. I love to see the continued build-out of the command structure and, you know, across all of our public services. It's great to see, you know, our public service operations supporting the younger generation, building out opportunities for advancement. And, you know, that's the stuff that keeps people happy. It allows us to, to recruit new, high-quality, you know, officers and, and, you know, firefighters. So it's really great to, to see that, that structure being built out and that support that we have for people that are coming up. So it's something that I think serves the community really well. It makes us a safer community, because ultimately, we have that sort of continuity of service. And nobody is sort of an individual who is too heavily relied on. You know, it's, it's more of a team effort with, you know, so that's always a good situation. And I really appreciate everything that you guys have been doing. So thanks so much, and super, super excited for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Alma?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your service up to this point and obviously going forward. Your family must be very proud of you. It's awesome. It's probably a really great feeling.
It is.
And it's earned. You do have some big shoes to fill. Chief Crapo is a great man, and he's a great chief. And one of the things that makes him so great, along with Evan, is the promoting from within. It's a really, really hard thing. You don't see that all the time. But as soon as he said goodbye to us, no sooner did he start talking about you. And that's a selfless man that cares about his people and about the community. And so in that regard, I wish you all the luck in the world. I know you're gonna do great. You're gonna do outstanding. You'll have all the support in the world from this board, for sure, and, and the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If I could, just, you're absolutely right with, with the chief and even Evan, you know, moving forward, they're, they've both been open to new ideas and transparent and honest going forward and, and trying to advance, you know, the organization and make some improvements and growth. And it's, they've been, they've been super with it.
Everybody said, you know, what they've brought to you is, is really well said. So I'll keep it short, but congratulations and to you and your family. And it's a big job. I mean, it's a really important job in this community. So I hope that you're able to, to be out in the community as much as you can, because the way you presented yourself here is how you are, and I know that's your reputation. So being with the community people, I think they like, you know, you're a bit of a rock star, right? So people are gonna wanna see.
If you say so.
Yeah, yeah. Until it's time not to be. But, but with the majority of the community, obviously. So they, you know, it's nice for them to see you out and, and interacting with them. So, and it is great to be able to, to promote from within. That wasn't always the case, but it is now, and it's great. And we need to continue that, if at all possible, moving forward, you know, years and years. And I'm glad you got an eight-year-old, because you're gonna have to work for a long time.
Yeah, I think so.
You know how much college costs?
So, so I'm thrilled for you. I'm thrilled for the town. You're gonna do an awesome job. And you got a young crew, a lot of new police officers. So I think that's great for you. And I know you've been there since, you know, the majority of them or all of them have been hired, pretty much.
Right.
The older regime has, has moved on, I think, for the most part. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, been a lot of turnover. So, but it gives you a, a young crew to, to mentor and lead, and I think that's great. One last thing. So the last time Chief is in, he won't do anything about Axteau Corner.
Here we go.
Please look at that. I mean, it just doesn't make sense.
We did. We did.
You striped some lines up there.
We got new dash lines.
We need another stop sign over there. You gotta look at that.
We'll take that under consideration.
All right.
Not his appointment to the Traffic Safety Committee, which will be shortly.
There you go.
You should stay on that.
I should.
I should, but I'm not going to.
So I just will.
You can't make me.
Madam Chair. Round it out. I wanted to, you know, thank Chief Crapo for having the vision to, you know, kind of get this succession in order, which really makes things easy for all of us up here, that you guys have had this time and also with Evan, to, you know, kind of, I don't want to say groom in a weird way, but, you know, get you ready to, to step into this and just such a smooth transition. I mean, what a great thing for the town of Grafton. So thank you for having that vision, first of all. And I want to congratulate you. And as Craig said, you know, amazing title, the chief of, of police of the town of Grafton, and couldn't be happier for you and your family. So thankful to have you on board and to have had, to have been here. And as one of, someone else said, you know, you have the full support of myself and the board, I'm sure. So thank you for stepping up, and I wish you all the best. Best of luck.
Thank you, folks.
Come back and see us whenever you want to.
I'm sure, I'm sure I'll be back. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thanks, fellas.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Alma?
I move the board to vote to affirm the appointment of Neil Minardi as chief of police effective October 4th, 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Excuse me. Any further discussion? Andy?
Was, is there a nested joke in there with it being 10-4?
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, no further discussion. I'll take, I'm sorry, we have a motion that's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No one is opposed. We accept you five zero. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Indeed.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Congratulations. You were there. Would have been rude to just leave you hanging.
Thanks, chief. Okay, great. That's, that's just so awesome. So we are moving now on to auxiliary firefighters. Take a motion to appoint these two people?
I can do that. Move the board vote to affirm the appointment of Israel Marte as an auxiliary firefighter at Station 3 in Kai Belanger, as an auxiliary firefighter at Station 1.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Barring none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, and now we are hopping into New Business 4B, road closure request from the Congressional Church of Grafton at the Common. We, we gave them the option to come in or not come in, right?
I believe so, yeah.
Did anyone, was anyone here?
Nobody found anyone.
Okay. So we discussed is, this is the apple pie social that's been going on for as long as I can remember. It's on the 29th of September, and they're requesting that the, the road closure there at the Common from Millbury to Church Street from 9:00 to 4:00 on that particular day. Anybody have any questions or concerns? If not, then I'll take a motion. Go ahead, Craig.
Madam Chair, motion, motion to grant the road closure request from the Congressional Church for the apple pie social on September 29th.
Between the hours of 9:00 and 4:00.
For the designated hours.
Great.
Second.
Thanks. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero. You're switching things up over here.
File of grievance.
Skipping around the agenda. Okay, so on to 4C, we have a one-day all-alcohol license for Tufts University at 200 Westborough Road. Do we have someone here for that?
Hi, yes, we do. I'm online.
Hi, Jessica.
Hi, how are you?
Great, thank you.
So we have a couple of student events coming up for the back-to-school season. So on Friday, the 6th of September, we're looking at the Activity Fair for the Student Clubs. And we have on the 16th, a welcome dinner for another student club, the Veterinary Business Association. They are both being catered and served by Elm's Cafe. We have their TIPS certification on file, and we have police details for both events.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Any questions from the board? Good. Go ahead and take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to approve a one-day all-alcohol license for Cummings School of Veterinary Medicine at Tufts University on Friday, September 6th and Friday, September 13th, 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, and we're moving.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Sorry about that. Thanks for coming in, and thank you.
Good luck for the event.
Yep. And welcome, or good luck on the new school year. She's gone. No worries. I said it though. Okay, so moving on to the Host Community Agreement with Haze Cannabis.
Yes, Madam Chair, I can start. So I believe we have Colonel Booth with us on Zoom as well. Colonel is with Haze Cannabis. So what you have in front of you tonight is an updated Host Community Agreement, or HCA. It's updated for a couple of reasons. One is that the Cannabis Control Commission has kind of mandated a boilerplate HCA. And so what we've done is taken their boilerplate and then just added a couple of sections that protect the municipality in a couple of different ways. It's also an expansion of use for what Colonel Booth is planning to do at his facility. So currently, the current HCA was retail-only, and he is now requesting that we do retail, indoor cultivation, as well as transporter. And so just for, as a point of clarity, because this has come up a number of different times in different ways, transporter is not the same as delivery. So there's a specific call-out in the law that is for delivery, so you can, you know, call up or online and, and get marijuana delivered to your address. That's not what, what Mr. Booth is, is looking for here. Transporter is just between facilities, so he would be able to cultivate on his site. And then he has other retail establishments. on his site. And then he has other retail establishments that he'd be able to then transport the marijuana to. Other than that, the big changes are around community impact fees. So I, I know we've kind of brushed over this a couple of times, but I'll rehash. Community impact fees really have changed since they initially were put in place. No more is it a blanket, we get 3% or we get 2% or whatever it is. You have to be able to prove the impact, which is proving to be pretty difficult to do. There, there really hasn't materialized the direct community impact that was envisioned originally. So generally speaking, the benefit to the community beyond having another business in town and another taxpayer in town is we do get a 3% tax on the sale. But that's really, that's where the income money is. Those original discussions about large amounts of money as far as community impact fees go, haven't really materialized. And the law changed, I think, in 2023. Or the tail end of '22. So that's generally what you have in front of you. It's been vetted by council. It's been vetted by Colonel Booth and the folks over at Hayes. And, yeah, take any questions you may have about that.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Mr. Allen?
So is this the same thing as Simplicity? Is it the same address?
It was Simplicity and now it's Hayes Cannabis.
So there's just a name change?
Yes. Colonel, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's my understanding of it.
Well, and also additionally, those two additional parts of their business where they'll be growing and transporting.
Yep.
So previously, it was just a sale.
Just a retailer. Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't pick up on that part of the question, but yes.
It's the same owners.
Well, Colonel Booth has been with us, I believe, since it was Simplicity. No, there he is.
Hey. We have one hand on Zoom.
Yeah, let's have him let him talk in there.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Can you guys all hear me?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Yeah, so essentially, this Hayes of Grafton is the LLC name. My Simplicity Dispensary is the DBA for the retail store. This place is not a change of name. We have a DBA established with the town.
Okay, great.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so you're gonna start, you're gonna grow here. So is that gonna happen in the basement? Is that what that's gonna? You'll be cultivating?
Yeah, so- Yep, so we have, we have to say, so the pretzel company that once occupied the building has about 2,500 square feet of space right now that's vacant. And we're going to, we're gonna utilize that to cultivate in, just because it's a base, it's kind of a walkout basement space, so it hasn't been that, we haven't had anyone interested in renting it from the, in renting it. So we figured we might as well utilize it to create product that we can sell in our store right there in North Grafton, as well as our other dispensaries involved.
Okay. Just one more question. Is there gonna be a lot of odor coming from that, from that basement? Because there is another retail establishment over there.
It's very minimal. It's a small, it'll be a small footprint in regards to the actual canopy. And we have odors, when we do build this space out, in the future, we will have odor scrubbers, charcoal, charcoal air, sorry, charcoal air filters that neutralize the air prior to it exiting though.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and just one other point for clarification, just so the board, this is, this is step one for Colonel. He does still need to go back to the planning board and amend the special permit. And they will put probably some stipulations in there like they did when they did MJ's about odor control and, and all that stuff.
Mark, did you have anything else?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Anyone else? My question isn't so much to Colonel Booth, but I'm just curious a couple of things. Like are any other communities having any luck with the community impact fees above and beyond?
To my knowledge, not the same luck that they were having in the first three years.
Yeah.
And so a lot of that money has tapered off. And, and when I go to, say, the MMA conference or things like that, and we talk to other town administrators and go to different, you know, symposiums, the, the impact wasn't what the impact was thought it was gonna be, right? There was gonna be a ton of traffic and odors in the community and, you know, crime and, you know, drug use and all these other things were gonna come. And it didn't materialize. So I think that's partly why the legislature sought to roll that back. I have other thoughts on that, too, if you'd like to hear those off-line. But, no, we, it, it's just, it's, it's it's just different than I think they had envisioned or we had all envisioned at the time.
Yeah. Okay. And then, so this 3% fee, we are in fact getting that from-
It's a, yeah, it's part of the, it's part of the tax.
Okay.
And so we get 3%.
Up to whatever it's number-
Yeah, up to whatever. It's, it's essentially the same as you get with your local meals tax or things like that. It's based upon your, the amount of sales.
Okay, that's good to know that at least we're seeing that.
It's definitely, and I don't wanna minimize it. I know that's an impact to Hayes and Simplicity. It's, I just wanted to make sure that we were clear that it's not that, you know, we're gonna get a million dollars a year. It's, it's not that, that narrative anymore. But yes, they're definitely gonna be a good community partner with the amount of money that they'll pay in, from their sales.
And then to you, Colonel Booth, what's your timeframe for opening?
Yep, so we are actually in, working with the, the fire chief on getting our occupancy and life safety inspection. So we are, we will be getting occupancy in the very near future, which will allow us to open, I would say, by the end of the fall.
Okay. How many people will you employ?
We were, we're gonna be hiring initially around 10, 10 employees.
Great. Okay, that's all I have. Anyone else? And I believe we need to vote, yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Mr. Allen.
I move the board vote to approve the Host Community Agreement with Hayes of Grafton LLC as presented and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries 5-0. You got me with that loud "aye" over there.
Thank you.
They're really throwing me today. Okay, moving on to the regulatory agreement.
Thank you, Colonel. We'll, we'll talk, we'll talk soon.
Thank you.
Get you through the planning board process next.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
I'm just moving along.
Moving right along.
I apologize. The regulatory agreement, the LAU for units at 188 Providence, and I think Evan was gonna talk to us a little bit about that because the, there's a lot of information in the package.
Yeah, so this is a little different than we've, we've been doing at the board level. So this is 188 Providence. This is 120 units being built off of Providence Road. This is in the multifamily district that Grafton had set up. I think it was eight years ago, looking back, but it could have been up to 10.
That's why it's before planning and they got a special permit.
Correct, okay. So it's done by, instead of being a 40B and going through the zoning process, it is a special permit through the planning board. The other interesting component to this that's a little bit different is that the zoning requires 25% affordability built in. So that's interesting for a couple of reasons to me. One is it guarantees all those units are part of the SHI. But it's also part of the underlying zoning, so the 40B process doesn't even apply, which is different, a little novel, as far as what we've been seeing lately. So this regulatory agreement is so that the town and the developer can petition EOHLC. We have an agreement in place. This is what we agree on as far as the number of units, the cost, and all the things that are associated in that agreement for EOHLC to review and then hopefully approve. And then that also stipulates that they will get a third party to run the lottery system. And they do have that person under contract already.
This is Jay McGill.
Yep.
Project.
Correct, yes.
So this one's actually zoned for it.
Yeah.
Correct, yep.
Back when whoever you guys had the foresight to, yeah, to do that over there. So it's great.
It's good. It's also pretty far off of 122. It seems like it's tucked away and down a little bit.
Down along the river there.
Yeah, it was meant to be, it was gonna be a plaza.
Yeah, it was gonna be commercial.
It's got underlying zoning for commercial as well.
Right.
And then the multifamily went over that, it looks like.
So I had a lot of questions on this, but Evan cleared them up for me. So if anyone has any further questions?
Okay.
Understand. Okay, great. So we will, I'll take a motion to move into this agreement.
Okay. I move the board vote to approve the regulatory agreement with Broad Meadow Realty LLC as presented and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you to the previous boards for having the foresight to set this up.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Fiona for putting all that together, because that's a lot of work from, from her to get this off the ground. Excellent.
Thank you. I take my time moving on to the next thing, so I don't just not say thank you to somebody. I've been known to just barrel through. Okay, so moving on to the contract with Precise Paving for the North Street Sidewalk Project.
Yep, so again, we've been talking about this for quite a while. This is part of our ARPA sidewalk project. And so we went out to bid last month.
Two months ago?
Two months ago. And we were able to secure a low bidder, which is Precise Paving in this, this case. And we're just looking to get the board to authorize that so that we can start paving, get those sidewalks.
And those are going from where to where again?
From where it ends on North Street currently, which is right around, right past the school, kinda at that, that intersection, and then all the way down past 95.
Great.
So it's a good chunk.
Any questions?
And it should provide some walkability for those neighborhoods that are up there on, on North.
Past 95 North?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, sorry. I did just say 95. But yes, 95.
Route 95 is-
We are going for it.
That's a, that is a heck of a sidewalk.
A lot of funding recently.
I said, I said North Street in my head, so.
Which eventually with that, the park thing comes together, then that will be right up and down to there. So any further questions for Evan? Okay, and Mark, I'll take a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move the board vote to approve and sign the contract with Precise Paving Incorporated for the North Street Sidewalk Project.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great, so we will be starting to move along with that. Did you say the timeframe and I wasn't listening, or?
It should be starting in September.
Oh, great.
We'll change the screen on me, so now I don't know.
Make sure they be careful of the water things.
I'm looking at your computer.
Water pipes.
And, and also, Madam Chair, just to, so that low bid was 588,000, which we had put in the ARPA budget at 750. So I think even after design, we'll have a little bit of a turn back there. It won't be crazy money, but we are, we're under budget.
Great. Okay, and probably back over to you, Evan, regarding the HERO, sorry, we passed that, right? We went by, we voted?
Yes.
The HERO Act information?
Yes, thank you. So we are still, you know, kinda getting our, our hands around this. But I wanted to put this on this agenda so that you're aware of what we're going to propose as we move into the special town meeting, or the, sorry, Fall Town Meeting. The HERO Act was passed in the legislature in this last session. And it adds two new veteran property tax clauses, and those are Clause 22i and 22j, which establishes local property tax exemptions for individuals and organizations owned by veterans. And it also, there's also changes to Section 24, which is eligibility for vehicle, motor vehicle exemption with, with service-connected disability. So, generally speaking, all of these are clauses that are, offer you some exclusion from local tax based on your veteran status. It's very dense, so I'm trying to compartmentalize this. But essentially, if you live in a domicile that is eligible under Clause 22, 22A, 22B, 22CF, and E, which is E and F is backwards there, but you can get up to 100% off of your property tax if you meet certain criteria. As well as up to 100% off of your excise tax with certain disabilities. Yeah, so lastly, there's another clause in here, which I'm not going to go that far into detail because I haven't seen it work in, in action yet. But there's another clause in Clause 22 that will allow us to adjust the exemption based on the Consumer Price Index. So we can take the Consumer Price Index year over year and apply that to veterans' discount rates as opposed to them being set just at a certain percentage. Which is kinda neat because we don't really have that much leverage over local tax. It's all set by state statutes. So that lets us kinda decide how, how we're helping veterans in the community. For more information, there is a riveting DLS bulletin that I have included with tons of links. And we will be writing up a brief narrative explanation for the upcoming warrant that should be clear. But I wanted you to get the document and kinda get the gist of what we're, what we're looking at. And, and we will be requesting that the board support that in the fall.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Allen, no, Mark, no. Sorry, girls.
All right. So good. It would help me a little bit to understand, like, who this might apply to in Grafton. So what's the scope of the potential benefit? And also, what might the tax receipts implications be? Of course, I'm in support of this, but it'd be good to understand what the, what the actual impacts are and who would benefit.
Yep, and, and so it is a, an opt-in program, so that skews that data a little bit.
Sure.
And so what we're gonna, we will try to do that as precisely as we can, given the limited data that we have on the veterans in the community. Because we also don't, people think that we know everything about everybody that lives everywhere, but we, we don't. There's, there's veterans living in this community that haven't filed for anything. And we don't even know that they have veteran status, right? We did just recently do a mailing of everybody that has a DD214, which is a discharge from the military. So we have some data that came back from that. But anyways, long story short, we're gonna calculate the impact as, as greatly as we can with the understanding that there'll be a margin of error there because we just don't know what we don't know.
Sure. Yep, makes sense.
Any other questions? Okay, go ahead.
No, good.
No, I'll go at the end.
You said you, we have optional percentages. Did you have a percentage in mind for what we'd-
No, essentially what it does is that if you accept what they call 22i and the Consumer Price Index increases by 5%, it, it just automatically allows us to increase by 5% the, the exemption. There's, so you could, I think, from my reading of this, and again, I, we just got this last week. It looks like you, as a community, could say, well, Consumer Price Index went up 5%, we're only gonna give a 3% deduction. I don't know why we would do that. We're probably gonna be maxing this out because I think that the impact to the community as a dollar amount is gonna be fairly low, but the impact to those veterans that it supports is gonna be fairly high. So yeah, that's what we're working on.
Madam Chair, which is exactly why I support it 100%.
Thank you, Mark.
So I just, my question, so this is a state change?
Correct.
And then folks who, you know, we, obviously, like you said, all over the state, no doubt there's people that we, that towns don't know about, but are those veterans potentially getting something from the state? Or is it just that hopefully this is getting blasted and they're reading in the paper and looking?
That is a great question, and I don't know the answer to what the state plans to do for outreach. I do think that our Veterans Advisory Committee and our Veteran Services Officer are both working hard to create better lanes of outreach into the veterans' community. So I think that there's some opportunities there to make sure that people are, are getting this information. As they do their kinda, you know, annual flyers and things that they mail out about, these are the services that Grafton offers. This is what we can do. I think that's probably the, our way to do it.
Right. Okay, and so then we'll ultimately have some discretion in terms of what-
As I'm reading it currently, yes. So we're gonna, like I said, we're gonna put together the, the different sections of the law that need to be accepted by town meeting with brief explanations under, under all of them. And I believe that Chris Brown, who sent me this update last week, plans on kinda giving us the, the breakdown legally of what this would actually look like in practice, so.
Okay, great.
It's brand, it's brand new, just came out in August.
Yeah, I heard about it this weekend. I was with a veteran who-
Yep.
In Hingham.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's pretty neat- Yeah, I think it's, I think it's pretty neat. I'm glad that they did it.
Okay, any other questions? Wait to hear more, or if you wanna look at that information that Evan sent out, it sounds like it'll be fun to go through that. Um, so we just asked Evan to put Feedback Earth on our agenda moving forward. We might have discussed this at the last meeting, may not have. Uh, sometimes there will be an update, maybe there won't be an update, but uh, just until we feel that, or not we, but until things are resolved, period. So, um, I know that some of the board members, myself included, went to one or two of the uh the forums that were held up at the Community Harvest Barn. Sorry, I know I'm way far away from the mic. Uh, so I'll let other folks speak to that, and if Evan, maybe we, we'll start with Evan, do you have anything, or should we start over with us? Start with us, okay.
Okay. Nope, we're good. Start with you.
Yeah, so anyone who went to any of the community outreach, yeah, Mark?
I feel like Andy's playing possum with me right now. I know he wants to go, but ahead of this. So, uh, we all, uh, we both went to both uh sessions, so didn't, um, actually, just Andy and I went to both. Uh, you know, it's uh, it's, it's complicated, uh, try to come out with a fresh set of eyes. And is be, and just personally be as objective as I can be. Uh, hearing all of the residents and the surrounding businesses when they came in a few weeks back and talked about this. And the young lady that came in too, the little, little girl once that was playing, it just, it did, it you know, makes you a little bit, uh, you know, wanna be, you know, certainly advocate for the community, and that's what I want to do. So, uh, just try to learn as much as I can, and attending those both, both of those sessions was helpful. Uh, in addition, was also, I think, found to be um surprising was I didn't think that it was gonna be, it uh, feels like they're trying at Feedback Earth. Uh, you could talk about the misses and the failures, and that's, uh, there's, there's definitely been like some failures there, because if you drive by there, it's terrible sometimes. Your eyes water, it hurts so much. And, uh, you know, uh, the, the guys at All Steel, uh, Russo, it's, it's, it's brutal, I, it's, it's very hard for them, but I I did just a sliver of something here. It seems like she's trying very hard to fix this. Whether that really happens or not, it's gonna be hard to see. She seems super complicated, like from a chemistry perspective. You know, like all that stuff that most of us probably don't understand, the science behind it, seems like that's gonna be tough. Although I will say, she definitely seems like she's gonna try. She's got some things she's working on. It's hit or miss, it seems like it's missing. What I am left with is, is that, uh, she knows that if this doesn't work, there will be more pressure from the DEP, more public pressure. And I suspect pressure from her own conscience too, a little bit. This is gonna be, it's just gonna be tough to keep this, to keep this going, one way or the other, so it either works or maybe it doesn't go any further for her, so, um, but I just wanted to be, you know, very interesting, illuminating, informative. And I did, although it's hard for everyone, and it seems like folks are mad, and they should be. I, I, I did get the sense that at least today, from what I can see, she's certainly trying.
Great, thanks, Mark, and thanks to two of both of you for going above them.
I'll just, just one thing that I, I wasn't able to make the meetings, but um, the day after the residents came in here and, and let us know in more detail what was going on up there, so I, I called Senator Moore, just wanna a little shout out to him, because he was great, so I, you know, I asked him if he knew what was going on. He knew s- some of, of the history there. Um, he said, let me get ahold of the Regional Director for the DEP, called her, called me right back. And he said, you know, can she call you? And I'm like, of course. So I spent like forty-five minutes on the phone with her that afternoon, kind of explaining. You know, um, she could only, you know, give me some information, but um, a couple suggestions, and she was following up with Evan as far as an email address, you know, because the hotline is great, and she gave us some, um, kinda some intel on, on the things that, um, you know, that they should talk about during the call. But also having an email address where they can put their thoughts in writing and have it be documented, she thought you know, that might be an idea, and she was gonna follow up with Evan to get that going. I don't know if that has, um, that has happened or not, but it seems like they were aware of it, they were working on it, and there was some, some things going on there that she couldn't talk about, but it, it seemed like it's, it's one of their priorities out of that office. So I was glad to hear that and um pass some of the information along to Evan and to some of the residents that spoke here. Um, so that they would have the intel as far as when they do call in, what to, to describe to the, to the other end of the phone.
Mark wants a little bit more.
Yeah, just one other thing, um, thinking about what I said, that is by no means me, as one member of this board giving a pass to Feedback Earth on what's happened the last number of years. Uh, certainly vigorously advocating uh in support of the residents and the, in the surrounding community. It's gotta be right, it just has to be right. Just, those are some of my observations, but not a pass whatsoever. And I will also say this real quick, that in listening to, uh, you know, fellow board members in these discussions, really great um points made. Matt was particularly eloquent yesterday. Um, tough too, and uh, for whatever it's worth, the, 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 the community should know that this board is certainly on their side, working on their behalf, and made it pretty clear in some of the comments that were made and questions that were asked. Thank you.
No, so honestly, I was, um, I was happy that you chose to go first, Mark, because it really, I didn't know what I wanted to say to this tonight. It's a tough topic, um, you know, i- in, in going to those meetings. I did feel like they were very informative. They helped me understand Feedback Earth's mission and how they go about their operation. Um, and how kinda groundbreaking it is that there are few facilities nationwide that do this. Um, and, you know, it's, it's difficult to go into a room full of people that you've upset and take ownership of that. Um, which I, I think, uh, they did a good job of. Um, but at the same time, you, you don't want it to sound like you're patting them on the back too much. Um, because it is, it is an issue that we take seriously. I was a little surprised. Um, how many people seem to be, how many residents, I should say, seem to be a little bit more sympathetic after listening to the explanations. Um, on the flip side, the turnout was very low, which I think is also an indication that a lot of people are beyond the talk phase. Um, again, as Mister Alamo indicated, um, I believe Feedback has also realized that we are beyond the talking phase. They're doing the best they can to explain how we got here, and there certainly were kinda cacophony of errors that occurred, uh, uh, unfortunately, back to back to back. Um, that impacted the situation, but it's never a situation that's been gone completely. Um, and uh, they did express that they were fully aware that, that this situation will be resolved, whether it's on their own or via state intervention, uh, in, in, you know, the situation where they could possibly be shut down permanently, so. Um, you know, it was, it was a serious topic. Um, I was, you know, really happy that, that residents were as receptive and, and constructive with their comments uh, as they could be. Um, that's, I, I think that's where I'll, I'll wrap up.
Mm-hmm, agreed.
Yeah, thanks, uh, Madam Chair. Um, yeah, I guess I had a slightly different uh take on things. Um, for me, you know, the, the language that I heard, the rhetoric that I heard, it was um meant to be comforting. Um, and I understand that, um, you know, the doctor was uh fairly sheepish in her approach to things, um, but it didn't escape me that, you know, a couple of times, things slipped, like, well, you know, by law, we can do this, or technically, we can do that. Um, I don't like that in that kinda meeting. You know, you're there to um address concerns and take ownership, and to me, that kinda rhetoric doesn't help uh, at all. Um, I think that it took us way too long to get here. Um, we should have never gotten to this stage of things where people are done talking, and, you know, we've got pitchforks and, and torches in the streets, you know? That, cause that's kinda where we're at at this point. Everybody is so upset, and people have been living with this, in, in these terrible conditions for years now. Um, I did have to somewhat, uh, separate out the idea of the business, because it is really cool, and it's something that, in theory, I really support. I really want them to be successful, um, but I had to just kind of park all of that, because it doesn't matter. Like, it doesn't matter what they wanna do. What matters is the day-to-day experience that our residents are actually having. Um, so, I did encourage them to not depend on the state for monitoring. Um, and I think that was probably my biggest takeaway from this. The monitoring is not working. Um, they have capacity issues, they have response-like issues, um, so Feedback Earth has to do a better job. And I don't know, uh, you know, I don't know how they could do it, but they need to, um, develop their own system where, when, you know, odors are being created, that they're detecting them on their own, and they're fixing them on the spot at that time, um, and not waiting for somebody from some external third party to come, cause you can smell it. It's not, it's so obvious, and it's not something that, uh, you know, uh, I, so I I appreciated the, um, the effort in doing that, um, but I just have a serious credibility issue with them at this point, and, you know, when we don't have any complaints for a couple of years, great. You know, then you can pat yourself on the back. I'll pat you on the back, but not right now, for sure, because people are still uh, having, you know, just disastrous days, um, a- as they're just running their day-to-day, day-to-day operations. Um, I also was concerned with the number and variety of different things that went wrong. Uh, and my main concern with that is, um, my, my impression is that they're very smart people and good uh, scientists, um, but maybe they don't run, know how to operate a business like that, but operationally. Um, because I was hearing, you know, process issues, material handling issues, all of that kinda stuff, which um, you know, don't, don't learn on the job in Grafton. Go do that somewhere else, or in some kind of test facility, that, you know, as they change their cook methods, as they introduce new processes. Don't do that on the fly and wait for complaints to come. You, you gotta sort that stuff out before it gets introduced into the operations, so. Um, I, I did take them to task a little bit on some of that stuff, um, in as civil and polite a way as possible, but um, yeah, they've got a lot of work to do. And the other thing that, to me, is really important, they've gotta improve their relationship with the town. So when they're, when they're bringing in new materials, like, they weren't always doing seafood, so you know, if you're gonna bring in seafood, tell the town, because you know, you're probably gonna have some issues. If nothing else, with the trucks bringing this stuff in, so you know, let us know, um, and I just didn't really, I, I don't have the level of communications that you do, Evan, but um, I didn't get the sense that they were as proactive as they could be with, um, keeping in touch with the town. Um, with, as things change and, and evolve, so, um, anyways, I it was good, I, I found it very useful, very informative, um, and I'm glad they did it. Um, I'm just not holding my breath, uh, based on a conversation that we had with them. Um, I wanna see more action, um, and for things like the, um, you know, the paving, I know the town and the state, and, you know, we've gotta all partner together to make those sort of, uh, fixes, um, move along. Um, and, uh, you know, so, I just, I, I know as a town, we're gonna do everything that we can to support. Um, you know, the, the remediation of those issues, so, uh, anyways, that, that's me.
So maybe, sorry, Evan, before you do your two cents, I'll just, I'm just gonna speak to my experience at the first one. Um, you know, I appreciated that the residents, as you said, had already determined that they weren't gonna come out, so I think it was surprising to her to stand there and kinda wait for more people to show up, and, and to someone's point, tough to stand up there knowing what you potentially are dealing with, and then see, like, oh, maybe not, right, so. Um, I was down on the South Shore at Hull for the weekend, and my friend's down there now, because it was on the news and whatnot, and you're asked, they're asking me, what, what's going on with lobster in Grafton, you know, so, um, but they, they saw her on camera, and, uh, and interestingly enough, my impression was similar in that, you know, something like this. And of course, you all know, like, I have much more of a fiery personality, but it was the sense of urgency from her, and I think part of that is just maybe her demeanor, um, and the way that, you know, she is, uh, just very controlled, calm, um, you know, I, I don't wanna say scientific necessarily, but just that kind of not uppity type personality, very low voice, a little bit difficult to hear, so on and so forth, so I can see, uh, if I'm faced with this smell in my neighborhood, um, and that person was coming to speak to me about it. You know, you just kinda wanna hear from them that, oh my gosh, this is ridiculous, I'm on it, you know? And I just don't think that maybe that's in her makeup, and not for, as an excuse, but that might be, you know, a little bit of a part, almost like a disconnect, right? Um, I also brought up at the, at what the one that I was at, like, is there anyone that is in the building that can smell this, or anyone around, and that's, you know, under your employ? Um, how is it that this gets to this crazy, uh, that, you know, that it's going all over the place? But she didn't really have a, a great answer for that per se. There's a lot of kinda dancing around, I suppose, a little bit. And then I'll just end with a little caveat that I mentioned, um, when I was there. So I got a, a number of texts at like six o'clock in the morning, I think it was last Tuesday morning, about smells over near Nelson. So, took me a little while to get over there. By the time I got over on my way to work, the smell from there was gone. But what I did do on the way there, I had all my windows down, and outside of the post office pub, to me, is where I smelled it, right? So I go by there, I drive around, then I head up Creeper Hill, I pull in, spend a little time, right? Go off to work, and I smelled that smell all day. I subsequently met with Evan at three PM that day. This was at eight AM, and as I was sitting there with you, I said, I smell it, like it's, I don't, I was thinking, you know, is it my hair or something? Um, so.
Pretend I couldn't, cause it's It's like, do you smell that? I don't smell anything.
Nothing's fine.
Smells lovely.
But, again, just the idea of um, that, you know, what these folks are going through, and then this person comes out to smell it. And the gentleman that was at our, the first evening, where he said it's like lingering in his home no matter what. And I actually, you know, kind of experienced that, I guess, to a certain degree, so I'll end with for folks who are at home, or, you know, the people who are living in our town, we, as a board are completely go, doing everything already that we can do, and we're, um, you know, asking Evan to do so as well, so we'll continue to do so, and we'll keep this on the agenda going forward. That's it. Off to you, Evan, thank you.
Okay, um, so, after the meeting, uh, the, the last meeting we had, um, I've been in contact with DEP, uh, almost every day, um, with the Regional Office. Um, working on some, some different things and trying to help them get to through their hurdles for their process that, that they work on. Um, there are some things that we're not, um, allowed to give out publicly yet, as they're doing some things in the background. Um, we do not have the uh online interface yet, and I think that's related to immediately after the meeting we had the other night, um, the number and the company used for the third-party reporting changed. Um, and so there was a little bit of a scramble there. Um, we were able to take that number, and we reintroduced it to the community via Code Red, so we sent about four thousand text messages and emails. Um, and, uh, we actually, this time, instead of using a circumference tool, we uh, actually used DEP's odor verification map and went um, half a mile beyond every complaint that was ever filed with DEP. So we're able to, I think, capture a pretty big swath. Um, we also got those numbers out to Shrewsbury and Millbury.
Okay.
Um, so we were able to make that connection as well. Um, I also, I think, the only thing that's really relevant, we, we've done, we've done a lot, but the only thing that I think is really relev- relevant, um, nope, I'm gonna back up. Um, so we do have, uh, the Highway Department going up and down Creeper Road two to three times a day. Um, just to try to find, not find debris, but see if there's debris or anything that needs to be cleaned up. Really haven't verified that yet. Um, I'm not saying that it's not happening, and actually, Mister Russo dropped a package off for me. Um, I'm hoping it's not shrimp parts, but we'll find out shortly. Um, but, uh, y- yeah, so we're, we're continuing to, to kinda follow up and track these things. Um, and, you know, I, I think that it, it seems from the feedback I've seen online that there's maybe some relief, but it seems like that's probably mostly because they're only doing their burns at night, and they are trying to introduce a new technology, and I won't pretend to understand all of the chemistry involved in that. Um, so, the, uh, one other component, I think, um, I just wanna thank Representative Meridian. So the, uh, one other component, I think, um, I just wanna thank Representative Meridian. I know he went to the, I think the Friday event. He and I've been in contact a lot. I know Senator Moore, uh, Dr. Craig, I've been talking to Representative Meridian. Um, and so that's good. We're getting pressure kinda on both sides to get this problem fixed. And then lastly. I know it came up at least on Friday and it sounds like it came up on Monday as well. About, um, paving, the parking lot and the town's involvement with that, so I did go back through the conservation process. Um, and we have no application for paving. The only conversation about paving beyond, um, part of the renovation. Which we were told was just a re-lining of the parking lot that was existing. Um, is that, uh, at some point when we were getting a lot of debris tracked into the road and it was mostly dirt. And stone at that time, um, they did reach out to us to, um, talk about paving their driveway. Um, and their conversation was with Leah Cameron, our conservation agent, who just said, absolutely, you're, you're in the. No disturb or the whatever area. I didn't look at the map of how far in there, but so you need to come before the commission and. Uh, my conversation with Leah was that it, that was just a factual conversation and that no one ever came back. To follow up on that, but that she felt that the commission would gladly work with them to create. Uh, or to get through the process as quickly as possible to help mitigate that if this is what, if that's what's needed.
So how do we, what do we do about that? How do we communicate that to feedback? I mean, she pretty much indicated that, that, that was.
Yeah, so.
Sorry?
Yeah, but she, but also that was, uh, that was on, we were holding it up for, I think that was my, my recollection.
That was the implication.
She believes she, I, I, I think the inference was that we're not allowing that from a, uh, conservation perspective.
Okay, so whatever.
I will follow up. I just got that sit down this afternoon with conservation, so.
All right, come on.
I will, I know, I'm working on it. So, uh, we will, um, get something over to them that just says, uh, you know, I, I don't. Apologize for any misunderstanding that may have happened, but we're ready and willing to assist you in getting.
Okay, that'd be great actually as a follow-up and then maybe we can revisit that, um, in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Uh, because that was at least something that maybe we can do. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, no, well, probably, but I think that's it.
Yeah, okay, so you're on it with D E P. Daily and now we have understanding about this pavement, so that's great. Uh, another, I mean Sutton, I read something, if you know anyone in Sutton.
I can, I can send it to the Sutton T. I did not, based on the map, but that doesn't mean that they're not.
Somewhere, maybe online somewhere.
I can, uh, yeah, I've been just sending it through their administrators.
Mm-hmm. Well, then there was a notion that, you know, you don't know what you don't know, eh? So.
Right.
You're over in Millbury smelling lobster shells and they didn't realize, oh jeepers, there's something going on over at Grafton, you know?
Right.
So at least to get the information out there and we can see that.
Yep, I can, I can most certainly do that.
Okay, great.
I did send it to Westboro also.
Oh, good.
Um, but I did not do Sutton, so I will do that.
Mm-hmm, great, thank you. Okay, anything else on that?
Uh, Matt, I'm sure you do have a hand on Zoom.
Oh, thank you, William, yep, sure. I thought of it as we were going.
Hi there.
Louise?
Yes, hi, Louise Jones.
Hi, Louise.
Hi, first of all, first and foremost, thank you very much for your service to our town and thank you for your support on this issue. Um, I live down in Flint Pond Estates and in fact I, um, chair our H O A Homeowners Association for our community. So I wanted to just make a couple of comments. One is, we told our residents, we followed the guidance that was provided. And told our residents not to turn out to those two meetings, so that is part of maybe why you didn't see, uh, participation from our end. It is not because the issue is resolved in, in any sense and I, I know you've all conveyed that today, so thank you.
Yeah, we understood that for sure, yep.
Yeah, I do wanna also acknowledge, um, Matt, often your comments, um, and your sentiments couldn't. Couldn't agree with you more, absolutely one hundred percent of everything you said, um, separating the situation from the idea of the business. Um, very important and I know that for some who do not live, um, close to our community, the smell could feel like a nuisance. But our real concern is, um, our health and safety of our children and our families and. You know, the monitoring isn't working, you guys have said that. It's really important to maintain vigil, vigilance. Because if you look at the type of chemicals and the solutions that they wanna use for these commercial air deodorizers. They're toxic. There's a lot of V O Cs, phthalates, aldehydes, benzines are all in those, those chemicals, so. Aside from them getting rid of the smell, the question is really how are they doing it? What's floating through the air that's coming into our windows? What's hitting our pond? Because our pond actually waters all of our lawns. Our lawns are played on by our children, walked on by our dogs. Um, so that, that is a major concern for us and we're hoping, um, can appreciate your support more than we have. But really hoping that we can keep the, um, pressure on this and, and try to get to some resolution sooner than later.
Okay, thank you so much, Louise. Appreciate it. Okay, thank you, Will.
Just one more handed.
Okay, sure. Uh, Jesse, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. Sorry I couldn't be there tonight. I'm not feeling super well, so I'm coming in here from my kitchen. Um, hopefully you don't hear my kids in the background, um, but I just wanted to mirror Louise's sentiments, um. I really appreciate the way, the, the words I'm hearing today, the experience that you're sharing, like you understand the depth of that lingering smell. You know, it's not just a, it's bugging you and you can kind of ignore it kinda thing. It's, it's a serious implication. Which you all understand. I loved how we were talking about separating the idea because even us as neighbors, we love the idea. You know, hundred percent awesome idea, but it's still not okay how it's being run. And it, it doesn't appear that they know how to effectually run the business, hundred percent understand that one too. Um, I will say factually because I did a lot of the complaining, I'll say. Um, advocating, some might say nicely, uh, but in the last couple of days, it's gotten better. It has gotten better in our neighborhood, um, but driving by today, the smell was still present. From the facility all the way to all steel, so it's still affecting them just as heavily as it was before. And the idea that they're gonna test it at night when we can't report it, doesn't give me a fuzzy feeling. Like we can't implic-, we can't let you know how it's impacting anybody if you do it at night. And the idea that you're running a test kitchen rather than researching this before you fire it back up. Isn't giving me a fuzzy feeling either. My understanding is the D E P. Said stop. Not test it out when people won't be able to raise their hand and ask for help. Like that's. That doesn't sound like their best effort. I think she comes across. Scientific and she can convey things to sound like she's working really hard and I agree that it seems that way. But the fact is they're continuing to admittedly run something that's not working. Just at a time when no one can notice and tha- that does not seem okay to me. So that's something that I just want everyone to think a little bit more critically about. Cause we, we can't monitor it at night. We're all asleep and like Louise was saying, um. You know, the chemicals, we don't have awareness of what it is that they're doing and we are breathing that, so that's. That's my, my sentiment for this evening.
Okay, thank you so much, Jesse. Noted. Um, I do know on the Friday evening meeting, that did come up. One of the residents did indicate, you know, testing at night and, you know, what, what good is that if we can't report anything, so, um, duly noted. We will keep at it. Yep, Indy.
I don't, I don't wanna pile on and, or, or derail the conversation. I just, I feel like it, it warrants mention, um, do we? It was mentioned at the meeting that the fire department has access to the, like, chemical safety data sheets for.
M S D S sheets.
Yeah, the deodorizers and stuff.
Yep.
Um, and a- again, I, I, I don't mean for this to sound like challenging a residence. Um, you know, suggestion here, it's, it's. I bring it up because we were repeatedly told at the event, at both events, um, that these were. Um, very mild, uh, generic things like hydrogen peroxide and that the end result, or it's, was things like water vapor. And that we weren't dealing with any, any harsh chemicals for lack of a better term.
Is that a question?
Uh, well, I, you seem like you might wanna elaborate on at least the, the data sheets.
Uh, I do not, um.
But maybe we can request that.
Well, I, I have one public records request for the M S D S sheets that I've, I've gotta get out, uh. Through the fire department, cause we don't have that in, in my office. Um, and so we will, we will get that put together, but I also want to just be cautious. From a town perspective that we're not vetting the efficacy of the chemicals, because we're not. Chemicals and we're not the Department of Environmental Protection. They are the ones that should be vetting those chemicals. So I'm perfectly happy to take the M S D S sheets and say, hey, D E P., our residents are concerned about this. What are you, what are your thoughts on this? But we're not vetting them for. Uh, air quality because that's, that's not our area of expertise. We're, we're vetting them for their explosive characteristics. And the danger to firefighters when they get on scene. Um, so we'll have to go that one extra step and get that. That, uh, you know, verified, but I don't, I don't.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so that'd be great.
Get where I'm coming from there.
Yeah.
No, no, that's great, so we can at least just get that information via D E P. And then push that out potentially. Just to confirm what the owner was indicating to us and then additionally the, following up on the paving business. Okay, great. Anything else on this? Okay, let's move on to select board reports. Anybody have a select board report?
Did any of you go to the Feedback Earth?
Um, yeah, I'll just go quickly, um, so. Yeah, the Feedback Earth, uh, that forum was good, uh, I think enough's been said about that. Um, I, uh, went with a number of the affordable housing trust, um, members to Adams Road. Uh, to look at some of the developer lots that are, uh, in consideration to. Um, uh, move over to the trust's, uh, ownership for potential development and, and use. Um, so, uh, that was, uh, really good. Um, thanks to Amber. Um, for sorta helping organize that and Fiona for, for showing up and, and walking us through. Uh, we had a couple of the members from zoning board of appeals, so it was a really good walkthrough and, um, Andy brought his, his new toy. Got a few pictures, that was nice too. Um, so, yeah, it was good. Um, I thought that at least a couple of the. There were three lots we looked at and two looked really promising, um, in terms of actual development, uh, with some type of, uh, residential housing, so it's good. Um, and then, uh, yeah, I just, um, met with, uh, council, uh, to talk about some of the concerns. Uh, on twenty-seven seventeen Upton Street, that development. Um, so I just, uh, immediately prior to the, uh, meeting, sent the board out the list of questions, uh, that came out of that meeting. Um, so, uh, we're trying to get, um, that turned around as quickly as possible so that the board can have some answers, um. On those concerns from a legal standpoint, um, so that's, uh, that's what I have. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Matt. Anyone else? Andy?
No, we already covered mine.
Okay, all right. No one else down there?
Same.
Okay. Yeah, that's okay. I had one thing, but it's not really a town thing. Um, okay, moving on to the T A. Report.
Okay. Just waiting for.
I haven't done this in a little while.
Yeah, welcome back, Will.
Welcome back.
In person tonight.
I can't say I prefer this, but it's nice to have you.
Don't, I mean, don't let him fool you, Will, like it was, not every meeting was as smooth as they tend to be in your absence when Evan was.
Have you just seen him work in the power?
Piloting.
Each way you needed to be. I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay, just do it. All right, so Millbury Street, we're still on, um. We have the notice proceed out, uh, we're just waiting for them to come and actually tell us when they're going to be here. North Street Sidewalk, we already covered tonight. Uh, Depot Street, Street Bridge, that's not really ours to cover, um, as far as. When it's going to happen, but it's still late fall, early spring start. Okay, D B W projects that we have ongoing, Fitzpatrick Road Bridge. Um, we are hopeful to be able to get this in for October. Um, but I will not be surprised if it slips until spring. Um, we are getting a lot of delays in, um, materials that we, we've ordered for a different number of sites. Um, George Hill Road, Fay Mountain, Soapiel, Leland, um, still in pretty much the, the same place. Um, and Main Street, I think, I think I can take that off of here, but I haven't done the final, uh, drive-through. To see if they've kinda touched up those last little areas. Our twenty-twenty-four paving projects, um, Tracy Anne Drive and, uh, Greenie has not started yet. Um, it should be starting probably in two to three weeks on that particular area. We'll see, uh, as far as notification goes, if I can get that out in a timely manner. Chestnut Street, Pigeon Hill, that whole upper, uh, area has been milled. Um, they are doing the leveling course, uh, at, right now, not currently, but this week. Um, and then we will get a date for final pave. We don't have that, um, yet. North Street, uh, Sunday night, they did the final pave with exception of the patch. So I'll just mention, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question about that, so I know that there was a water main break, right? And they ended up digging into that new pavement.
Sure did, yep.
Yeah, so something we should talk about and, and, you know, I came down there a couple of days ago and there was, you know, where they had. Wasn't it, it was on the other side, it was the, the lane heading towards the common, but there was a section taken out, cut out there. And, you know, it had settled like probably six inches. This is the water department, so they need to come in here because they're not, they're not making their repairs properly. They're not using the right material, they're not compacting properly, something's going on there, um, and that's a brand-new road.
Yep.
And we could make them pave. The, you know, we do have a policy, at least we used to, about doing full width if the road was under X amount of years, that they gotta do full width pavement. So we don't have all this patchwork, which we know what happens after winters and pumping of pavement through freeze-thaw cycles. It comes apart.
Yeah, so I, I don't know that we'll be able to do that in this particular case because we broke the water main. Um, on Chestnut Street. So what happened is our contractor hit the water main on Chestnut Street. Water department went to turn off their valve and their valve broke. So it seems, um, I, I don't know that our policy with the full width applies here. But I do take your point about compaction. We do have issues with compaction, um, and so I have, I, I was on site for. Almost three hours that day. Um, I talked to Paul Canoyer quite a bit about compaction issues and settling and obviously the. This is a brand-new road, what are we even doing right now? Um, and so there's been talk, um, or we talked about potentially using flowable fill. To try to get better compaction numbers out of that, um, but also spending a better. Amount of time getting the site to settle before we overlay the top. Um, and so.
That's the beauty of flowable fill is you don't have to wait. You get a hundred percent compaction immediately and you can pave and it's never gonna.
Right, so.
That's, that's the benefit.
So that's what we're discussing now. Um, I have to follow up with Paul if that's the final decision that he had made on that. Um.
Yeah.
But yeah, that was a, that was an absolute mess. Um, when I got there, they had already uncovered the top of the valve. The valve was. Very old.
Yeah.
Um, and it would just spin and it was just dumping water out of that hole.
I mean, we have a lot of old, seems like every year we have three or four breaks and a lot of it, it's very old pipe, right? And I don't know, so that they seem to be reactive instead of proactive and I don't, you know, I don't know if there's an opportu-, you know. We should bring them anyways, cause they get some other things that are going on. People have been getting notices about, we just discovered that the water. Did, you know, we had filtration issues or whatever and, you know, people are drinking the water, right? So I think they need to come in anyways, but as far, I mean, regardless of who caused the problem.
I, I was only speaking to the paving component, the rest of it, not us, right.
Point taken, but in general, we should talk about, um, that North Main Street, you know, and I don't know who was more than water down there. But I, I don't, I mean.
Yeah, you should see in that, I was, I, again, I, I spent a lot of time down there, the amount of infrastructure in that hole.
Yeah.
It's only eight feet across and there's two water mains in there. There's a six inch and a twelve inch. And then there's our sewer on the far side of it and then there's a, a, a Y for the water, uh, with a, with a valve that was there and that.
Were you talking about North Main or are you talking about?
Sorry, I, were you talking about North Main?
Yeah.
I'm still on North Street.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't know, I, I, I was gonna talk about North Main eventually, but, um. Yeah, there's just a ton of infrastructure under these roads. I don't think the average person understands the amount of things under there. Um, but it's also interesting to me that some of this infrastructure is so old that we don't exactly know where it is. And we also have seemingly concurrent infrastructure that is either abandoned in place or might be abandoned in place. There's a, a lot of it that we don't really know. I think that I, I've, I took some solace in, uh, standing with. Paul Canoyer who has, I, I don't know if any of you've ever worked with him, but he's technologically challenged. Um, he was able to pull, he, he'll tell you. He was able to pull up on his phone, R G I S and get the manhole's exact coordinates. Depth on one side, de- depth in, depth out.
Yeah.
And, and have it all right there for, for the excavator operator to say, here's. And and have it all right there for for the excavator operator to say, here's where it is. We don't have that for all of the infrastructure and not all of it is ours. So, um, that was. Kind of eye opening. I mean, I've been on a lot of water main breaks in ten years, but, um. Yeah, there's a lot of.
Yeah, they got some old pipe out there. One thing we did years ago and it worked out well and the stars kind of lined up and I would just ask. You to keep it in mind is when they were doing Wheeler Road.
Yep.
There was, they they would, they were running water line up there and the road was in really bad shape. And so in the water department district was on the hook. To do a lot of, lot of pavement up there, right, to to fix, because it was, wasn't a narrow trench. It was a, it was a big portion of the road. So, so we said, all right, you guys are gonna have to do this much pavement. If we threw in the town, threw some of our, you know, our annual budget into that. Why don't we do it right? We'll rip up the entire old road and do it and and they kicked in their amount and we kicked in our amount and we got a. Brand new full depth pavement for probably a third of the cost of the town that we would have had. And and we would have ended up with a patched road, right? That wasn't. Was one side would have been better and the other side was, I don't know if you remember that years ago, but it was horrific. You know, it was really bad road, uh. So if there are opportunities where there are some, you know, where they have to do major repairs and it may be something that's on our list. Um, to, uh, to see if we can cut a deal with them and get get the road totally rebuilt. When you look at the life cycle, it's it's worth it.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I agree. We have. Some conversations, uh, at that level, but not enough.
Yeah.
Or not as much as we probably should.
Yeah.
I think we're heading in that direction, but but you're right. I mean, there's, there's ways that we can, um. You know, better play in the sandbox to get a better benefit for the residents, um, working together. Um, North Main Street, just real quick, uh, there's, the paving was completed again on Sunday night. Into Monday morning. Um, there are a couple of, uh, lingering issues. Uh, we had a casting break and we have a couple of other things that need to be taken care of. But that's good that we've gotten the majority of that done because that's been a nightmare for a couple of years now.
Yeah.
What's the plan to rip that up again?
Uh, immediately.
Excellent.
We're gonna, we're gonna do a water main on the other hill and then.
Following the the Worcester tradition, that's what they do. They rip up, they pave a road and then they rip it up within two years. But the compaction is is something that we really need to adjust because it's. They're just not compacting and whether they're not using flowable, which I know they're not, or they're not doing compacting and, you know. One, you know, twelve inch lifts and they do not doing, because that that North Street, I mean, that it was settled this much. And I was on top of it before I saw it and I said a bad word and then hit the hole.
I don't believe that.
A chance to get out of the way. So it's, uh, there's no, there's no need of it.
Right.
It can be done properly. They just, they just throw the dirt in the hole. Probably compact the top and leave and then two days later, especially after rain, you know, it settles.
Right. And that's one of the parts that Paul and I were discussing was. You know, flowable fill is obviously the best, uh, option in our opinion because you get a hundred percent compaction right away. Um, the other option is to, you know, water these things in essentially. And it takes quite a bit and an amount of time because it settles and settles and settles and and, you know, um. We we did, we spent quite a bit of time talking about compactions because that's my first thought when I got there is. This is gonna be six inches lower than it is right now. Two years from now. We can't have.
I don't know. Do you guys, everybody know what flowable fill is? You guys, it's a ready mixed product, so it's, 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 it's not, it's not concrete, but it is, um. A material that's produced and delivered by a ready mix producer or a mobile mixer producer, but it's got a little bit of cement in it. But basically it's a liquid sand. It's a lot of sand. There's some air entrament in there and there's some cement, so. It's very, very wet and it fills all the voids. So if you have a pipe in the ground, it consolidates that pipe. So you, you don't have to worry about compacting under the pipe and then having that settle. So you get a hundred percent compaction and there's different, there's different designs, so you can get on it very quickly. It'll drain very quickly. And you can pave that day or you can plate it back the next day and do it, but it's just, it guarantees. Good, good compaction.
Yeah.
Is the barrier cost?
Generally speaking, I believe so, yeah, unless you have a different understanding of it.
More money, but you're not, you know, it's a lot less labor and you're not, you know, so.
If you, you know, you you take a patch like that and you do floor, flowable fill. And then, you know, do your patch and then infrared the top, that'll last you a long time.
Yeah, so I guess that's the key, looking at it over the long run.
Have you talked to Brian about that?
About infrared?
About flowable, because he's got a mental block, so it's only been like twenty years of my life trying to talk to this guy.
I I ha- I have not. I talked to Paul about it.
Well, that's a good place to go.
Okay. Um, okay, we'll work on that. I don't even know where we where we were.
We're done with, yeah, we're moving.
Sorry.
Okay, so, uh, Kupla project, we're looking at some flowable fill for, that's right now. Um, that, we're just gonna fill it with flowable fill and be done with that Kupla. No more leaking. I'll tell you that right now. Um, okay, so that's continuing on just. No real updates. They they have everything offsite and they're finishing up the. Are we calling those columns? What are they called?
Yes, the bottom two feet of every column is cut off. They're rebuilding it. They're gonna reattach it. One column they had to take completely off due to rot on the top and bottom. But beyond that, the Kupla looks great. New louvers are in. They, um, waterproofed the entire inside. It's, it's cool up there, even for somebody with a fear of heights. I like going up.
That's why we put you on that job.
Yep.
The R E C C or Regional Immunity, Emergency. You know what I mean? We are, uh, meeting tomorrow morning to rate the R R fees that we got for architects. I think we got seven of them, top of mind. Um, so I spent, it takes a few hours to go through each, I mean, there are a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty pages each. You gotta rate them. It takes a long time. So we, we got through that. We're meeting tomorrow to kind of combine everything and then set up interviews for the following week. Um, or the week after to meet with our top three architects. So we're getting some good motion there. Um, ninety five North Street, I went to C P C last week. I think we had a very good meeting. Uh, we came up with a basic plan of, um, going back to town meeting in the spring, but with a altered plan that. Has the value engineering visible so that residents get an understanding of what we're talking about. And then maybe paring down some features of it that are, um, things like the pavilion and things that drove that cost. Astronomically when we actually got out to bid. Um, so we're gonna start working on that, uh, pretty soon and, uh, kind of try to build a a better presentation about that. Children's room carpet is, I'd like to say fully installed. I know, but. Then maybe there's something next week and then we.
No buts. It's either in or it's not.
No, it is. It is. It's it's in, it's glued down, but, you know, industrial carpet can lift two weeks later and you gotta re- reattach it. I just wanna make sure that we're not saying we're a hundred percent done and then then I get called out that there was one tile that popped up, so. But we're, we're there and now we're just waiting for, um, scheduling the final move of the materials back to the their homes. Then they're gonna fix, um, a couple of the shelves and then. Then we're, we're done.
Um, Meyer will be in next week for the move.
There you go. Next week for the move back. Making, making progress now.
This is the carpet that we've been having trouble getting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're almost there, Mark.
I won't say anything else, then we'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, right. It's, it, and it looks good. We, we got the Cove molding in this week or last week, last week?
Uh, Cove basin went in last week with, uh, a different color, but it matches better. Looks great in there.
We built a whole addition on the library quicker than we replaced the carpet.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We agree.
Yeah.
We agree. Uh, but we have Tom now, so.
Yeah, I know more about library carpeting than I ever wanted to know.
I think it's just carpeting in general, but that's fine.
Okay.
Move on.
Yes.
Come on, Will. All right, uh, seventeen to twenty seven, as Matt mentioned, the hearing on that closed. Um, five millennium, I left it as planning and conservation. I actually. Didn't check to see if they they closed out. Um, unfortunately, I just ran out of time today. Uh, eight millennium, that's that thirty thousand square foot per meeting is complete and I think they're. Gonna be doing some groundbreaking shortly. UPS is still going through the planning and conservation process. One twenty four Westboro Road permitting is complete. We, we actually don't know, uh, I, I think this is gonna be similar to what happened with. Two forty four Worcester Street, which is, they've got a project spec and now they're shopping for leases. Um, fourteen Snow Road, I don't have an update. Uh, last I had heard, it was submitted to E O H L C and we're waiting for that to come back. I, I should have updated this. So we did finish negotiations with G P D, but then they came back and, uh, are gonna revote at their level. Uh, because some issues on the the union side, which is perfectly fine. Uh, they're not issues on our side. We're, we're in good shape. Yeah. Um, and then, uh, Safe Harbor continues to be the same. And there's not really anything here for ARPA to look at, although it's also not loading, so.
So, uh, but I have a question on ARPA, so we have to have this, you know. Delegated isn't the right word, but, uh, appropriated or whatever, right? By the end of this fiscal year.
Correct, yep.
So if we're sitting on this, obviously it's not gonna be one point eight because there's some things that still have to move over there, like the paving and what have you.
Right.
Um, but. What's the plan?
So the plan is to get to about January or February and then reconcile what we have left. And either come up with a specific plan or there are other tools at our disposal to. None of the money will go back if that's a.
No, that's not what I'm, I'm just wondering like.
I got that.
Because the committee doesn't meet meeting anymore, right?
Correct.
Only oversight is right here, just FYI.
Yep.
And, you know, we had these specific things, some of which obviously are just like probably either not gonna happen or what have you.
Yep.
Um, so, you know, say we end up with a million down there. So. By December thirty first, we don't have to have this allocated? You're saying?
No, fiscal fiscal year goes until.
Oh, I thought it was the end. Oh, sorry. Okay, okay, nevermind.
So we're, we're working our way.
Calm down about it.
Okay. Um, we are working our way through. I mean, I can give you brief updates, I E.
Perfectly fine. I was thinking it was the end of this year. Okay.
I, I know, but as I'm looking at this, we, we have done some things. Um, that are still probably in that column showing a balance where the balance doesn't exist. So I should probably clean up some of that. Um, which is like the, the school, the behavioral health, the innovative learning tools that we've given that money to the schools. Believe they've purchased all their software. Um, I think the fire chief, I did see the P O come through for the standpipe equipment that we allocated money for. And the chief is, um, we actually were just talking about the drone. Um, last week, so I think everything's been specked and, uh, we're ready to go, so.
Okay, great.
So, yeah, some movement, but not really anything substantial. So, sorry about that.
Some, no, for some reason I thought they initially it was like the actual end of this year. Okay, and that's, is that it, Evan?
Yeah, I think so. Oh, one last thing, sorry, Madam Chair. I just wanna thank, um. Lynn, who's been helping out in our office. She's been doing a backlog of minutes. And so you'll see on your agenda tonight are two sets of minutes from twenty twenty one, um, which is excellent. We have. Um, I think Amber said today about twenty more sets in the backlog that go all the way back to twenty fifteen. So Lynn is sitting there and watching the meetings at the computer and typing them up, uh, which is fantastic, uh, really invaluable. To have her, uh, on staff for the short time that we have her, so just wanted to say thank you for doing that.
Twenty fifteen.
I know, to get them all to date and then we can. Move on to the next.
I'll be able to vote on those. So it's not a good thing.
But we're, we're getting there. She's making great progress and it's really, it's a project that needs to, needs to get accomplished, so.
I think it's super important, um. So, yeah, thank you. Okay, so anyone have anything they wanna talk about in correspondence? The gentleman on High Street, you. Did we, did, so basically he emailed, he had concerns about like the one way. His street becoming a one way. You emailed back saying you didn't think it was gonna affect him and did, is that in fact the case?
Yes, correct.
So that's.
Yeah, it did not, uh, impact him the way that he thought. He, he did not respond, but, uh, both I and Chief Crepo had emailed him to say. It's only that short section of High Street that that comes out there between Perry and, uh, oh, I forget. It's not School Street, something like that, though.
Hmm, right.
The one that goes past Whitney Park there.
Okay. And then the other one, I had just made a note about, um. Water, because I just think there was something in here about water. So, but we've already discussed, we're gonna put them on upcoming agenda when they can make it and that's that. Anyone else? Anything from the?
I have one other thing I wanted to mention to the board that I forgot. Um, so we had. Uh, the resident from Carroll Road come in at the end of last meeting. Um, I did speak to the neighbor about the lights.
Okay.
Um, he does in fact have a small strand of solar lights around his garden. That he enjoys having and sits on his porch and looks at. Um, I did. Look at them. I've only seen them in the day, although I could probably take a ride by tonight. Um, they don't really seem intrusive, nor do we really have any. Way to regulate that. So I let him know that. Uh, his neighbor was not, uh. Happy about them, um, but that I was not requesting that he do anything because I can't do that. And he said, thanks for reaching out. I like my lights, so, um, which I, I think is perfectly reasonable. Everybody should have enjoyment of their property, so. That's, I just wanted to put it out there.
Had asked about that, yep.
Yeah, thanks for pulling up.
Sure.
He had stated that was a tree, that they were in a town tree, though, not around.
So there, there's, and I don't wanna, so there does appear to be a string of lights in a tree that's in the public way. But I, I was under the impression that's his tree. And those are his lights from before. They became on the other side of the fence. So I didn't really go that far down the rabbit hole. Mister Finn on the other side said, the only strand that he owns are right in front of his garden.
Which is very much on his property, the, the garden area. I mean, it's.
Um, yeah, I didn't go all that much farther into it, to be honest. But, yeah, he seemed like, it seemed like a reasonable answer.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Yep.
I gotta say, things like this, I've always been blessed to have good neighbors, thank God.
Hmm, I, I will say, having done this job, I make it a point to make sure I'm in good relations with my, my neighbors that I don't really see the value in.
So just in correspondence though as well, you mentioned about, uh, Snow Road there, but we do have this letter from. E O E, whatever they're called.
E O H L C.
There, right, that pleased to inform you that the, is that, we're talking about the lip was approved?
I, I'm sorry if it's in there, I, I missed it.
Okay, yep. So I guess the E O, all of that, uh, E O H L C, um. Did send us approval, actually to Matt. August eighth, I think it was. Okay, anything else? Anyone else with correspondence? Okay, so moving on to resignations. Uh, Mister Almo.
Yes, Madam Chair. I move the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Julie Capozziello from the Master Planning Group.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
When opposed, motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair.
Mister Almo.
I move the board, the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Carol Semenon as an election worker.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero, passes.
So.
You can make the motion.
I actually prefer, uh, Madam Chair not to make this motion.
Yep.
And I know it's gonna seem a little bit weird, but I'd like to make a comment if I could.
Sure. We're going to accept it, though.
Well, it really doesn't matter if you do or not.
So.
Guys are not doing it anymore.
Just, uh, just, uh, uh, I, I just think the town should know whoever listens to this stuff, whoever watches these meetings. They probably already know this if they watch any Z B A meetings, but just as a point of reference. Bill Yeoman's, uh, was one of the few people. Well, I shouldn't say that. Bill Yeoman's is a person that has put a great deal of time, energy and effort. And his heart and his soul into researching the smallest thing. And whether we agreed with him or disagreed with him, he did it selflessly and he did it on behalf of the town. Because he liked to serve the town. He's a very smart man. He, he tried very hard to do the right thing. And the thing that I liked about, I like about Bill, perhaps the most, is that he has disagreed with me. On a few things, which is interesting because they feel like I'm pretty neutral. But when in his disagreement with me, he always offered me the opportunity to share my side of the story, if you will. And even though he didn't fully agree with my side of the story, he accepted and said, cool, let's move on. It was very, just a very telling, just a really great example of how people can carry themselves in public life. You don't have to agree with everything he says, thinks or does, but he certainly tried his heart out to do it. So out of respect for Bill. And in recognition of all of the work that he did for this town, I'm actually not gonna make this motion. And I'll just point out really quickly that I'm not going to accept this resignation, even though I will be outnumbered. But that is out of, out of respect for Bill. He's a good person that did a lot of good work on behalf of this town.
Noted.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, I'll make the motion.
Bill Schmil. Bill Schmil.
Because I love Bill and this is what he wants. Um, before I do that though, and I won't pile on, but. Mark um said it very well. Bill is, um, he's an amazing man. He's, he, uh, he's a very bright guy. He's had a. He had a great personal career. I know him very well. It's hard not to be in graft in politics without knowing Bill. Um, and once you meet him, you'll never forget him. He's just, uh. He wears his heart on his sleeve and he cares a lot about the ta- the town and, and the guy that lived in Shoesbury. For a very, very long time and moved here, I don't know, I'm gonna say ten years ago. Um, and really embraced graft and, and he was very involved with Shoesbury as well. It's just, one of his things is to do public service and get involved with his community and he did it here. And thank God he did, because he did a lot of incredible work. Um, he's a great friend and um a great advocate for, for really for graft and all things that are, that are good. And um, he's just a wonderful man. So the board, I'm sure the uh, the ZBA will miss him. Um, and um, but we'll have to find something for him to do. He can't put any more flowers or trees in his yard. And he did, like what he did at One Grafton Common. You know, all of those things. He went around and, you know, and twisted every business owner's arm to, to get some money in a pot. And Koopman almost went out of business and he took, you know, he, they kept giving him stuff and he planted all that and he, he had a weeding, watering. You know, list and he just, he's a leader. So he's a, he's a great guy, so. Um, and others can comment on him too, but he, he's gonna be, he's gonna be missed on, on the ZBA. But he's not going anywhere, I hope, because we'll find something for him to do. So. Without further ado, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Bill Yeoman from the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. Any other discussion? Go ahead, Andy.
Uh, yep, just echo everybody else. Um, you know, Bill's uh been kind of a fabric of the community. Um, and you know, quick to reach out to people and, and offer his services and, and that depth of knowledge. Um, and while it is goodbye from the ZBA, uh, we can continue to look forward to his presence in town meeting and, and everything that he offers there, so.
Yeah, I'll just go quick.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, I'm always surprised by the breadth of uh things that um Bill gets involved in. He's very passionate, um, and he will, he'll do crazy research into things uh to bring awareness to different issues from. Trees on the common to the sort of sewer uh capacity in town, I mean. Uh, so I really admire that guy and he's somebody who will uh garden in front of uh One Grafton Common and I, I saw him. For a very long time, working on that diligently to make sure that that um, that that whole building and whole facade and everything just looked beautiful. And it continues to look beautiful to this day. So, yeah, great, great guy. Um, and Bill, we'll see you around town. I, I know he's not going anywhere.
I agree. I, I appreciate Bill for all the work that he's done for this town. I appreciate the support that he's given me, the knowledge that he's imparted. Um, to me and just our conversations, whether relative to town, um. Information or just anything, you know, in general that we've, we've spoken about over the last number of years, so. Thank you so much, Bill, for your time on ZBA. Thank you for showing us how to be a, a leader. Um, how to get along with folks on, on boards and make things work. Um, and to your point that, you know, we're not, obviously we're gonna be looking to him to be involved in some way, shape or form. And I'll certainly be reaching out to you, Bill, for, for information going forward. Um, so, uh, we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Anyone abstaining? Uh, so four to one, thank you. Any public comment? Anyone here in the audience? Anyone at home?
No hand phones though.
Uh, so we will take a motion relative to meeting minutes.
Oh, uh, I'm sorry. I move the board vote to approve the meeting minutes for February sixteenth and May eleventh of twenty twenty-one as written.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any comments? You wanna make a comment?
Brief. Uh, it was, it's fun reading some of these back, uh, back minutes because it's like a little time capsule. We literally were talking about the Main Street paving project tonight and that being hopefully officially wrapped. Uh, uh, but that was being kicked off in those minutes and we were also being introduced to our brand new town administrator, Mrs. Bressard. Uh, in those February sixteen, twenty twenty-one, so, um, kinda neat. Thank you.
My reading of it wasn't quite as fun. It was reminding me that we, I was remembering, I thought we had more time. We only had one week to try to buy Pleasant Street back then, our little committee. Uh, so anyways, motion made in second, I believe. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries and I will.
Should I abstain since I wasn't there?
No, you don't have to.
Okay, I. You're just stipulating that you believe they're a fair and accurate record.
Okay, I believe you. I take a chance.
Live a little, kiddo.
I will tell you, I was there and that. This woman is watching the, the playback and writing them, so.
Add Mark to the list of people that are indicted for perjury.
I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, great. This motion, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for those who came and thank you, Bill, for videoing us. And I hope that our audio was better.